Most gracious heavenly Father, we pause now to give you things. Thanks for so many blessings that you've given to us. We thank you for our community and for our great state and the great country we live in. We pray that you continue to bless us all and just continue to keep your grace and your hand involved in everything we do. Bless this council, the decisions and actions we take, so that they'll be pleasing in your sight. We pray all this in your Son's name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge. First of the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
I'd like to recognize Commissioner Patrick Reagan. He's here as our guest tonight. And Mr. Victor from Encore, we appreciate you coming too. We have two celebrities in the house. I appreciate you.
He's here for an item. We'll get him.
Our next item of business is a special presentation of Business of the Month. It'll be presented by our president of Jedco, Shane. So, Mr. Shane Pace?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. So, this evening I will be presenting the Business of the Month Award to Southside Bank. So, I do believe I have Molly. And Molly, who's with you?
Ronette.
And Ronette, I'm so sorry. So, I just want to talk a little bit about Southside Bank and why they're such a great benefit to our community. We have lots of banks to choose from, but one of the things that I learned about Southside Bank through the Leadership Jacksonville that I was a part of this year was, first off, that they have sent many of their employees through the program.
Program.
The program. Thank you, Molly. And, you know, one of the things Molly was kind of giving her story and how she started out as a teller, and she was kind of in the little glass box out there, and her boss really saw something in her and moved her inside and just kind of took her under her wing and gave her an opportunity to kind of move up the corporate ladder. She is now the branch manager, is that correct? And so, she's a local Jacksonville girl. And what that tells me is that Southside Bank is committed to the people here in our community. They value them and they see them as resources and as partners, and they give them the opportunities to do better things for themselves and for their families and for the community. So, those are the types of businesses that we want to recognize each month. So, with that, I think Molly has a few things she wants to say.
Well, it sounds like you've done your research, so here are a few things that came from a speech that I had recently, but just want to thank you for recognizing us. We really appreciate it. Southside has been Jacksonville for 19 years. I've been with the bank for eight years. My leadership didn't start until probably about six years ago, and I've eased in and just love it here, and I'm born and raised here. I never realized how great the community is and just how, you know, you and Sheri just work so hard to help our community grow and downtown. It's just awesome, everything that's happening. And Ronette and I are just thankful that we have an employer that, you know, encourages us to get out in there and then, you know, just also allows us to get out there and volunteer as much as we can and just help out. And just want to say, since we are the best bank in town of Janus and Dillon, if y'all have applications afterwards, we'll have those for you.
Thank you so much, Molly. Thank you, council members.
Yeah, you bet. Thanks.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is the Government Finance Officers Association, also known as the GFOA. It's the Distinguished Budget Award, and I'm going to present this to Roxanna. She is our CFO for the City of Jacksonville, and this is the seventh year in a row that she has earned this award on behalf of the city. So, we want to present this to her. It's a job well done. You want us over here for the... Yeah. So, I'm going to present this to Co-Heart and Friends. She does an outstanding job keeping us... And she always says, "Yeah, you can spend that money." Nah, maybe you shouldn't spend that money. And both of them are very important, so thank you for all you do. Our next item is citizens' participation. This is where we set aside some time to hear from our citizens. Did we have any cards? Nobody signed up? Okay. Our next item is our consent agenda, item number seven. You can see we have a minute's approval. I would like to mention one on item D. There was a mayoral of the Anderson Cherokee Community and Recreation Services Board. I contacted a person, potentially they declined, so I don't have somebody if we need to... I don't know what we need to do.
We need a motion to pull that out.
Yes.
Okay.
So, I would entertain a motion.
I want a motion to withdraw item D from the consent.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McCray.
I second.
Second by Councilwoman Latitia Horace. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so we're going to pull item D out. Now, we have A, B, C, and E.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McCray. Any discussion? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number eight is to discuss and consider with possible action awarding the request for quote for the Buckner Park Playground Equipment and Renovations. Mr. James?
Yes, Mayor, City Council, this is an item we've been hearing about for some time. It's a grant project, so they take a little bit longer, but pleased to be at this point in the process tonight where we intend to seek City Council action to award a new playground for Buckner Park. So, the process kicked off in September of 2021, and we were notified in September of 2022 that we received the grant. It's going to provide about $131,000 of support for this project. This past April, or April, I'm sorry, April of 2023, we had 23 proposals from vendors looking to provide a new playground at Buckner Park. And so, this next slide is a rendering of the playground that we are seeking City Council support to award. Gulf Coast Recreation would be the supplier, and the manufacturer is Henderson Playground Equipment. We've done due diligence on both the vendor and the playground manufacturer. And then, here on the slide shows generally where it would be located at Buckner Park, and that's where the existing playground is. However, it will be roughly three and a half to four times the size in terms of fall surfacing and quite an array there, as you saw in the exhibit, of different playground equipment. So, that is what we have this evening.
Okay.
I had a question. Is now the time?
No, probably not.
No.
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion, and then we can...
I'll make a motion that we approve the playground equipment.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McCray. Now, anybody have any questions or would like to discuss or anything?
What are our plans for this, for the equipment that we're taking out? Is it... I mean, will we utilize it in one of our other smaller parks, or is it being destroyed?
That's a good question. I think as of right now, it's basically going to not be seen again. It's in kind of poor shape. A lot of the, you know, metal coverings and surfaces are coming off.
I'm too big for it, so... I wouldn't know firsthand, so...
Yeah, it's actually in the quotation for the vendor, just to remove it and haul it off as part of the process. Yep.
Question?
No question. I think it looks like an amazing facility. I really hope the neighborhood over there enjoys it and the kids over there have a great time playing on it.
Sure. And this will be installed by the end of this summer?
Yeah, the goal is to see this before the end of the calendar year, hopefully early fall.
Okay.
So, we do have a motion and second on the floor. Any other discussion or... If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number nine is to discuss and consider with possible action awarding the electric vehicle charging station contract. Mr. James?
Yeah, Mayor, City Council, I'm actually going to let Renissa Wade, our Assistant City Manager, run point on this, and I believe we have our representative from the vendor here as well.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you. We have Doug Kenfield and David Puma are both here from EV Tech. Before we get started and have them come up or answer any questions that you may have, I'd like to give you a little bit of background on this. For an extended period of time, the City of Jacksonville has been talking about and looking at perhaps trying to install at least one EV charger in town. As we've progressed through those discussions, it was discovered, and I think it was at the bidding of Councilman Tim McCray, that the state actually took a look at us and said that Jacksonville would be an ideal place to have an EV charger because of the different highways that are coming in from 79, 69, 175 that are converging in on Jacksonville that with traveling motorists, that it would be an ideal place to actually put an EV charger. As you may be aware, the White House Administration has issued a goal that they want to have at least 50% of the new vehicles that are going to be issued in 2030 to be EV vehicles. At the present, I believe there's more than about 3 million EV vehicles that are on the road with approximately 135,000 public EV charging stations. And so, with so many motorists here and we're looking at connectivity, if someone is traveling from Houston to Louisiana, they really need to map their route to be able to stop and get a charge and to be able to recreate. And we want to make sure that Jacksonville is situated to be one of those towns where they can just say, "Oh, we can come in this quaint little town, and we can stop, and we can spend a couple of hours, and we can shop and do business." So, when we were looking at putting in EV chargers, we started with, well, should we just buy them? And we looked at the price of them, and they were between $5,000 and $10,000 for probably a Level 2 charger, and then greatly more expensive than that for a Level 3 direct charger. And so, we started thinking about, can we operate it? Do we have the manpower? Do we have the know-how? And we quickly found out that we are not in the EV business. And so, we started looking at other models to see how could we satisfy the need of the community, but also satisfy the need of the organization on the financial output and the manpower and the resources available to actually do this. And so, as we looked a little bit further into it, we saw that there were two East Texas cities that had EV chargers with... One was Brenham, the ice cream place, and the other one was Frankston, which didn't seem to run it directly. It's at a church. And so, that wasn't the model that we wanted to follow, but we were able to ascertain information that there are ability to do a turnkey model. And the turnkey model allows for a contractor, private business, to come into the community to own, operate, and maintain the units. Sometimes the models can give you a revenue cost share, and sometimes the models don't, just depending upon what the appetite is of the community. And at this particular point in time, whenever you're looking at a revenue share, it's usually you're also looking at a cost share or some kind of investment from the municipality, and we just didn't have the appetite for that. Our appetite really solely was to provide the convenience to our community and our citizens here in town, as well as to promote tourism and economic... I don't know what the word I'm looking for is, but development or push forward with having the EVs here. So, we went with putting out a RFP, and we asked for proposals to come back in on May the 2nd. We did receive six proposals. The proposals were originally based on identifying about three places in town to put an EV charger, which centralized around our activity area, which is our downtown area. So, we looked at the two parking lots downtown, as well as the civic center. Many of the contractors also identified other places like the library, Nichols Green Park, and maybe even Love's Lookout now, and also the Tomato Bowl. We did have to tell them that we didn't own the rights to the Tomato Bowl, nor do we own the rights to Love's Lookout, and that we would have to really start with what the city actually owned and provides spaces for that. As we went through the proposals, many of the proposals did propose a Level 2 charger, but some of them proposed a Level 2 charger with a 4 kilowatt or a 7 kilowatt. And I'll give you a quick and dirty of EV chargers, and believe me, I've gotten my fill of it. So, the Level 2 4 kilowatt or 7 kilowatt, that's something that's going to pretty much take you an overnight charge. You'll see those type of chargers probably at hotels or different things like that. When you're looking at chargers that you're seeing at the mall or at a restaurant or somewhere where there's an activity at the movie theater, you're really looking for a semi-quick charge, which is something that's going to take a couple of hours, which will give someone an opportunity to come to town, walk through, eat dinner, eat lunch, or, you know, go to a couple of shops and then go back, and they should have a decent enough charge to probably get them to the next charging station. And that particular Level 2 charger you would be looking at is about a 19 kilowatt or about a 20 kilowatt. And so, of all of the bidders that we had to bid, which was about six, we only had one to really identify that they were willing to put a 19 kilowatt charger into our community. Now, we did go back with the permission of our city attorney and ask clarifying questions of the other bidders, just to make sure that we were actually reading their bids correctly and that they had opportunity to really explain what they meant by the things that they said. And some of the other ones did allow to come up and do something different. But as we continued to go through the bids, we noticed that there were some amenities that were pointed out for EV Tech that were not in the other ones. Not that they would not be willing to do it, but they did not express it to us in the RFP. One thing that's really important to us is the beautification of our town. We're putting in new sidewalks. We're redoing some things in downtown, and we're just revitalizing the community, so to speak. And so, in the EV Tech proposal, they did propose that we'd be able to pick the skin of the actual unit. So, right here, the unit is modeled with EV Tech being the branding, and I'm not suggesting that this will be the branding. I'm just saying this could be an option. We could put tomatoes on it or something similar, something that would beautify, that would go into the area that we would be going into. They did have an outstanding references. Their team brought many years of experience, some as much as 30 years. The team has been in developing battery chargers for an extended period of time. They've been in the actual EV charging business for about 10 years, actually installing and putting the chargers in place. Everything from the maintenance level, responsiveness, the mapping, the no need for an app, but having the ability to have an app, all of those things hit all of the targets that we were actually looking for for our community. And believe me, the actual bidding models were very close. When the team came together, it was very close on who should we pick or where should we go, but we did eventually decide to go with EV Tech. I'd like to thank the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem for both being on the team and evaluating this, the Mayor Pro Tem being the most knowledgeable about it. And so, well, I'm sorry, Mayor. You did really great, too. I'm sorry.
It's a bicycle.
Yeah, yeah. So, being the most knowledgeable about how it actually works, and so, we did come up with that particular bid to present to you today, and we're open to any questions that you may have at this time.
And Renissa, I think it's important that the community know this is at zero cost to the city. It's completely turnkey at no cost to the city. The company will generate electricity revenue for people to use the chargers, but we won't incur the cost, maintenance, or all we have to do is give them the spot.
That's correct.
And that spot that we give them will be marked off to where... Parking's an issue kind of at this point, but it'll be only for charging units, and we'll have to maybe police that somehow. I don't know how we'll do that, but we'll figure that out, so...
Our police chief said he'd be glad to do it.
Okay, okay.
He's going to be excited to enforce that.
Maybe that's a fire department function.
Name.
So, yeah.
I'm just curious, Renissa. I know you mentioned that we're looking at, as far as locations are concerned, starting with locations that we own, that are publicly owned. Just out of curiosity, what would it look like to say, put it at a movie theater or near the Tomato Bowl where people are going to be parked for a long time? Just out of curiosity, if we have an idea?
And I think that would have to be a partnership that the contractor would have to develop with that property owner.
Okay.
Now, of course, you know, we are bringing them into town, and we are wanting to be a good partner with them. And I believe as we develop out this chargers that they put in place for us, and as we go through our growing pains and make sure that, you know, the business model that they've presented to us is working in the manner that we will be a good reference for them, and so, someone could call us and ask us, "Is this working? How has this worked?" Et cetera. And then, maybe they would be more apt to allow it to happen in their area. And I'm going to be honest with you, Council Lady, you didn't ask this, but one of the things that they're really making a big push for is to have big things like buses and dozers and different things like that to go EV as well to help with emissions. And so, one of the things that the White House Administration is also doing is setting aside incentives for this type of public partnership, private partnership for the city's own fleet as we may end up transitioning towards EV chargers. So, there may be other areas that we will be able to expand into as we see how this actually works.
Okay. And one of the things that you and I did talk about was, are there currently any tax incentives for cities who are venturing in this direction to see, you know, if there's anything that we can get today? But as of right now, there's not any that we know of, correct?
Not a tax breaker incentive that we would be able to get. Now, there are grants that are out there, many of them that are opening up now and then being able to be awarded, I believe, next year, and then others that the private industry could actually apply for, but have the city to partner with them and sign on with it to be able to... And I'm pretty certain that with EV Tech, they're looking at every opportunity they can to be able to get the upfront cost that they need to put in, because at some point, there's going to have to be a return on investment and a break-even point, and if they can get there faster with grants, I'm sure that they would want to do that. And we indicated in our RFP that we were open to varying models of being able to do such things.
Okay.
So, once we do this, if JISD would look down the street and said, "Man, we'd like to get involved in that," the city would stay out of that. They would... We would give them EVs, contact, and that would be a negotiation between those two.
That's correct.
Renissa, I think EV Tech also offered, they offered us the analytical data that they get, I think, on these, so that as they build up and we get a few years into it, we can start seeing the trends, the patterns, and all of that, because I believe we have a buyout option of equipment at the end of five years, and at that point, the city can make a decision whether or not we want to take ownership and revenue.
That is exactly correct.
Okay, so we're looking at a five-year lease?
Yes.
Well, it's actually, it's not really a lease. I think it's more...
Or a contract. Okay.
Yeah, five-year contract.
Love your...
I believe, if I remember right, that, and we can have a buyout anytime in that contract.
That's correct.
If we want it, and definitely have a buyout option at the end.
Right.
Or an extension of a year, if we choose to go like that.
That is also correct.
Okay.
So, hearing all that information, I will entertain a motion.
I'd be very proud to make that motion to enter the contract with EV Tech for electric charging.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McCray.
I'll second.
Second by Rob Goen. Any discussion, comments? My comment is, I do not know anything about EV chargers, nor do I really desire to learn. So, and Tim is the resident expert on that, so that was all...
That's a very nice thing, isn't it?
Given that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. And thank you guys for coming. We look forward to working with you. You bet.
So, perhaps there was one more question?
None of us know anything.
We don't know enough to ask the questions, so we appreciate you.
I really appreciate your comment about having no knowledge.
I don't.
However, you have one, you have an ace in the hole. Renissa is now a walking expert.
Yes, she is. Yeah, you bet. We appreciate it.
We already had one over here.
Yeah, that's right. Very good. Thank you.
You did a beautiful job. You did a great job.
Yeah, absolutely.
You said to do all that stuff.
Item number 11.
Tim.
Tim.
Yes, sir.
Tim is to discuss and consider with possible action a resolution obligating American Rescue Plan funds, the coronavirus-staked local fiscal recovery funds from the U.S. Department of Treasury.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, on Thursday, we reviewed a very similar list that you see on the PowerPoint slide this evening. The city did receive about $3.6 million of American Rescue Plan Act funds or funds via the American Rescue Plan Act. We've committed some of those previously. We have an unreserved or unallocated balance of roughly $2.3 million. And related to some of the recent action in Congress with the debt ceiling, there is some effort by the federal government to claw back these funds from different entities that they used to disperse them throughout the U.S. So, with that, this is an action tonight to basically obligate funds. It's the first step towards securing them, making sure that as we file our annual report with the federal government that we're showing using these funds for the intended purposes. So, I'll just read the list here for anybody who may be on YouTube and unable to see something, but we have $500,000 for road and street projects, $500,000 for utility relocations related to the widening of US 175 from roughly West Side Elementary to South Bolton or North Bolton, $400,000 for fire hydrant rehabilitation and replacements, $100,000 for IT infrastructure here at the city, $100,000 for tree removal at the cemetery specifically, $100,000 for backup generators somewhat related to our IT infrastructure at both this building, City Hall, and our Public and Community Services Building, $80,000 for the roof at the former City Hall, 301 East Commerce, $100,000 for Hazel Tilton Park, $50,000 for improvements to the huts at the RV Park, $100,000 for the library facade project, $100,000 for Lincoln Park, $40,000 for batting cage storage area, and we'll be discussing that here further in a moment, and then $192,222 to round out the total for demolition.
We've heard that explanation. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we use these funds, what, that we make a res... that we approve this resolution obligating our American Rescue Plan funds.
Okay, perfect. We have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McCray. Any questions?
I do have a question. I know we just talked about this on Thursday, James, but has there been any further discovery from the feds about when they might claw this back? How much time do we have?
No, I think the initial layout was that we had to obligate funds by the end of 2024 and spend them by the end of 2026. Nothing has further has come out from the federal government. I don't think we're under any imminent threat, but again, this is a great first step.
Right. Okay. And then, as far as these numbers, they're somewhat placeholders, right? We're still trying to dive down on what some of these costs are going to be and just how much we actually end up allocating to these different projects. May ebb and flow as more information comes to light.
Yeah, most of these projects will require further council action in the form of approval and approving contracts, but I see this as kind of the green light to get going on using these funds for these intended purposes.
Okay.
So, we have a motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Now, item number 11. Discuss and consider with possible action to replat a block A, Lot 32B, Lake Spring subdivision Lake Jacksonville.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, pretty straightforward replat here. It's generally on the west side of the lake, kind of west of the concession area. It is in the county. It's coming before you this evening because it's a lease-held lot, and essentially, it complies with our subdivision and our zoning regulations, and simply, they're just getting 50 feet of access on a county road as they subdivided the property to basically give a piece of the property to another family member. Typically, these would be handled administratively because it's the creation of four or less lots. However, again, because it's city-owned land, our practice has been to come to City Council for these.
Okay. Just straightforward. So, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to reclaim.
Have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McCray.
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Latitia Horace. Any questions, comments, discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 12 is to discuss and consider with possible action approving the construction of new batting cages at the baseball complex and authorizing the city manager to execute a maintenance agreement with the Jacksonville Baseball and Softball Association for those batting cages.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, I notice Micah Hoffbauer is here this evening, so he may have a little color commentary for this item, but we appreciate their interest in reinvesting and helping us continue to invest in the ballpark. But we appreciate their interest in reinvesting and helping us continue to invest in the ballpark. They've done a tremendous job over the last couple of seasons raising money for the construction of this facility. And we were really impressed with it when Micah brought it forward to Randall and I to kind of get a first look at. We saw a lot of value in the city investing in the expansion of it for our purposes and storing materials and equipment out there in a more secure and in a more aesthetically pleasing fashion than a Conex box and things like that that we've used in the past. And so it would be a total footprint with the city's addition, if approved by council, of 133 feet by 48 feet. I believe it's three lanes, the batting cages. The Baseball Softball Association would also have some dedicated storage there on the one end of the building in the rendering. So the city's requested addition came to a total of just under $30,000 in the ARPA side. We put 40 because there'll be some ancillary things, some FFNE that we may need to purchase to kind of outfit our side, whether it be a window unit or something like that, air conditioning. And then on the maintenance side, Brett's helped us craft that. I still want to have some discussions with Micah on that. But overall, the baseball association will be responsible for all, like, the consumables related to the batting cages. So the nets, the mats, the bases, all those things. The city will likely provide electricity to the facility because it'll be a very nominal amount of electricity. We'll probably tie into an existing panel on the restroom concession stand area. This is where we would be looking to locate it on the slide here, just west of the existing concession and restroom facility. And I think we'd get going on this within the next couple of months. Is that accurate, Micah?
Okay, good. Okay, you've heard that explanation. I'll entertain a motion for the city's portion. Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim McRae.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Rob Goin. Any discussion or questions? Anybody has? If not, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. All right, we're down to item 13, open forum for mayor and council. Your time to speak. Anybody have anything?
I'd like to kind of touch on a little bit of the animal problem we have over around my neighborhood anyway. I guess a lot of people have heard of that. We have a prominent attorney here in town who's attacked while he was jogging.
Right.
And some stray dogs. I thought Mayor City would be able to touch a little bit on kind of what to do. I know a lot of people are nervous.
Right.
Because it was just kind of a non-provoked attack and he's in a hospital in retirement.
Right.
I hadn't heard about that.
I haven't heard about that either.
Oh, my goodness.
Would you like me to make some comments?
Yeah.
Yeah, I certainly appreciate our animal control officers, our police department. They've been out there almost around the clock. Of course, the dog, the subject dog, I don't think has been apprehended yet. A few other dogs in this kind of roaming pack have been. But we're still trying to find the prime suspect, if you will. And I know there's eyes on that area very regularly. Some citizens in the area also have, myself on number, the mayors and others and have been letting us know when they've been seeing it. But unfortunately, it has a pretty good network of the creek system to get in and it's been a little bit difficult to apprehend, so.
It is difficult. That's why you're right. There are a lot of places to run and hide. But I think people need to be aware right now, especially the ones, we have a lot of people who walk and jog especially down O'Keefe Road in Fort Worth. And they just need to be real aware that there is this issue.
Yeah, I had not heard about this. That's scary thought, for sure.
Sunday evening, yeah.
Yeah, well, and I can say, I know over in District 1, we certainly have had an issue with, you know, animals being loose and not being tied up and maintained properly. And it's a concern all the way around. Folks don't like to walk. You don't like to let your kids walk. Our kids go to a barber shop just up the street from us and I don't let them walk home from the barber shop because there are just too many loose animals running around. So it's definitely an issue that needs to be addressed all across town.
And when something like this happens, I think it really draws attention.
Really highlights it. Yeah, yeah. Well, I certainly hope he does well and recovers soon.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you, Tim. Anybody else?
Mayor, I do. I'd like to share. So District 1 will actually be hosting a Community Resource Fair. There's some flyers out in the foyer here, so feel free to grab one. But it's gonna be open to the public, free for everyone, adults and children alike. We'll have food and we'll have giveaway items. We'll have a bounce house there for the kids to be able to play in. We'll have all sorts of vendors and different organizations present that'll just be there to share information about the different resources and programs and services that they have to offer to the community. So come one, come all. Everyone is invited. It'll be Saturday, June 24th at Seminary Heights Church of Christ, and it'll be from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Thank you, Mayor.
You bet. Absolutely. All right, Mr. James, city manager's report?
Yeah, just a couple of items. As we've made reports of previously, we do have an ongoing auction for some items, particular commercial kitchen equipment out at the Civic Center. That auction ends June 19th. And you can learn more on our city website at the top under Business Bid Opportunities, Bids and Auctions, or on govdeals.com by searching Jacksonville. Sixth Annual Flag Day Ceremony is actually gonna be tomorrow in Hazel Tilton Park, beginning at 11:00 a.m. Dr. Burkett has organized a wonderful program lasting approximately an hour with live music, speakers, and veterans in attendance. So we look forward to hopefully sharing that day with you. And I believe there's gonna be light food served complimentary as well. And on that same block where we'll have Flag Day tomorrow, we'll be starting demolition hopefully as soon as this Thursday of the former fire station, bringing that block really back to its singular focus as a community gathering area. So there's a historical plaque in there that talks about that. And at one point in time, the city needed to carve out a piece of the block for the fire station. Of course, a little over a year ago, we opened up the new public safety complex on South Bolton. And this facility, being so specially purposed, was difficult to repurpose and it makes sense to bring it back to the park. So a couple renderings, very conceptual of what we're looking to do there is just have a very passive park. We'll likely add some restrooms and some type of small stage-type facility there. And we just see it as an opportunity for the whole community to come for small events like Flag Day, up to Memorial Day things, and then concerts in the park and things like that. So look forward to leveraging that to bring the whole community together downtown. I do want to just thank the chamber and all of everyone on our team who spent weeks ahead of Tomato Fest and hours after Tomato Fest cleaning up, setting up. I wasn't able to be down there as long as I had initially planned on Saturday, but the little bit of time I was, it was fantastic. The vendor mix seemed really good. The use of space was nice. They expanded onto the new wider sidewalks and areas, food galore. My kids had a great time, so thanks to the chamber for everything they did to organize that. And next year's the 40th, so I think they're already planning. That is all I have.
All you have? I might add, in our consent agenda, we approved closing of some streets for the Juneteenth parade, and that will be Saturday, this coming Saturday. Oh, okay.
There'll be a parade too.
Is there a parade?
Oh.
Yes, there'll be a parade too.
Okay, perfect. So it's a lot of fun. If you don't have anything to do Saturday morning, you can come out and enjoy it, so.
Yes, yes.
Okay. There is nothing else, so I will, we will go into closed executive session. City Hall Conference Room per Open Meetings Act per Government Code Section 551.071, consult with our city attorney, 551.072 Real Property, and 551.087 Deliberations Regarding Economic Development Negotiations. And any action out of that executive session will occur once we come back into regular session. So we will stand adjourned out of regular and we will enter into the executive session. Thank you for coming.